I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Okay, yep. I need a motion for the approval of the claims and financial reports.
Make a motion.
I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Okay, now is your turn. Anybody who likes to speak on anything that's on the agenda, please come up to the microphone, state your name, tell us why you're here, say good evening. Okay, moving right along. Superintendent's report.
Okay. As always, a lot going on. This is a very, very busy time of year. Everyone asks how the school year winding down. It winds up. And then we get to graduation and moving up. But just some things going on that I wanted to update the board on. You may have noticed some white vans out on the corner in front of the high school, probably for the last several weeks. That's the New York State Department of Health. They're doing water testing. There was some issues with some of the wells in the area. And so they are testing for PFAs. I think you'll find that they are finding PFAs. It's like a lifelong chemical that's in fire retardants and other products. They're finding them in some local wells. The homeowners know it. They're dealing with it with the homeowners. I was questioned about it. We are on county water. All of our water comes in through the county, all of our drinking water and any of the water throughout the building. So it's not an issue for us. But I think you'll be hearing more about it. They're testing throughout the county and throughout South Hall Town. So there'll be more to come. But I wanted to let everybody know that our buildings are on Suffolk County water and that it's tested on a regular basis. There's been a lot of conversation about next year's cellphone restrictions in schools. I've been meeting with the Suffolk County Superintendent's Association as we work through the new legislation and working with our legal counsel. And we, our policy committee went through and we made some adjustments to Policy 4526, which is our computer network and internet acceptable use, policy regarding electronic devices. Long story short, that's where any changes are going to live. And our policy at Ketchikan East will continue next year as it is this year, where no web-based devices, students are not allowed to have web-based devices. That's, you know, the watches, tablets, and things of that nature. And at the secondary level, the students will be required to put any of those devices. Be encouraged not to bring them to school, but of course, we know that they're going to. It's a valuable tool after school. But they'll be required to put them in their lockers and for the duration of the school day. And there are exceptions if there's medical related issues and it's in a child's IEP that they need to have a web-based device to monitor their condition. That would be an exception. Parents are allowed to send their children with non-web-based cellphones because some parents have expressed concern that I'm going to need, I have to get into contact with my child and my child has anxiety. They still have the option. You have the phone. We'll be putting something out at the buildings this summer, going into more detail about the policy, the enforcement of the policy and so forth. But I know this is going to be a tough shift for a lot of our kids, but in certain ways, I'm looking forward to it as well. As you walk around our school a lot of times in the hallways or lunch and the kids just aren't interacting with each other. And I think it's high time that we make the shift. So it wasn't as draconian as we thought it would be, but there'll be more to come with that. That policy will be back in front of the board at the July meeting for adoption.
Sean, does that mean lunchtime, they won't be able to use their phones?
Correct. Correct. There'll be no policing of our juniors or seniors that go off campus. I'm not going to act like that's something we can enforce. We're not going to. But in campus during the duration of the day is the law. I want to congratulate Ketchikan East's sixth grader, Whitney McKenzie. She was recognized by Senator Palumbo the other day and given an official state proclamation for her efforts in creating a no homework day at Ketchikan East this school year.
Love that.
So I've been asked, is that going to be an annual thing or that was a one-year thing?
They asked for it for one year.
There we go. That's what the proclamation says, one year.
Yeah, that's what the proclamation said.
Very good. I'm happy to report that two of our students won Teeny Awards from the East End Arts Association for their performance in our plays held this school year. So congratulations to sophomore Morgan Dunn, chosen for best performance by an actor in a supporting role, as well as Catherine Abbott, who's a junior for outstanding performance in a musical. So nice job by both of them. I think there'll be more to come next year for those two. Doing a nice job. I want to congratulate Mrs. Brennan and the staff at Ketchikan East for throwing an incredible field day yesterday. The weather was on your side. Air quality was okay. I'll let the students share a little bit more about that when they do their report. The district hosted the Mobile Museum of Tolerance at both the high school and Ketchikan East for two days. This was, this came out of the work of our cares committee and Mr. Burke. So for two days, the mobile museum was here where students were able to attend workshops focusing on combating hate, fostering empathy, and promoting social justice. I got to sit in on one of the lessons. I wasn't sure what to expect when the trailers came in, but it was like a small theater with somebody, an instructor, I would say, but who really did a phenomenal job walking our students through different experiences, historical, and getting feedback from them. And it was, I was proud because you could tell they were so impressed by the amount of knowledge that our students had on the different topics and the history about it. So, you know, thank you to our history teachers for having the students well-prepared. You go into those things sometimes and you're like, I hope the kids are, you know, on point. And they really were. I was quite proud. I also want to congratulate seniors Kyle Hannes and Allison Murphy. These are two students in our advanced basic metals and welding class, and they're putting their welding skills to use. They're creating a go-kart together, which is really cool, kind of going on their own time and getting that project done. And I want to thank Mr. Lavignio for providing them with that opportunity to do so. I wanted to look to board know that we have worked the music schedule for next year and we are going to look to pilot a marching band in grades seven through 12. It'll be a class. It'll be after school, two or three days a week, depending on the A-day, B-day schedule, where it would happen during that 10th period of time. So we would shift the teacher's schedules. There's really no more time in the day for these students to participate and give us an opportunity to now showcase our music program out in the community, parades, sporting events, and things like that. It'd be a pep band, marching band. So we'll pilot it next year and see how it goes. An update on the pre-K. We, as you know, we get 33 and a half spots funded by the state to provide families a pre-K experience. Just Kids provides that experience. That's who we've contracted with. This year, we had 52 applicants, which is great for enrollment numbers. That's the highest number we've had in years. And again, Lisa did the math and she's like, well, these are the COVID babies. You know, here they are. So she's like, don't get too excited. This may not be the new norm. It could be a blip. But, so there were quite a few families that were really disappointed. There's not a lot of options out here for pre-kindergarten and it can be costly. Mr. Delargy got on the phone with Just Kids. And again, every time we interact and work with Just Kids, they're just such a great partner to have, kind of, you know, expressing our dilemma and pushing on them to use their influence up in Albany to try to get us some more spots. They quickly afforded us five additional spots that they're going to cover the cost for this year with a commitment that they are going to try to get us five additional spots that will hold firm, which is excellent, you know. But at this point, we do still have nine families that are looking for pre-K options for their children. They are on the waiting list, hoping to get in. And I know that they're exploring different options themselves now. I'm in the process of beginning exit interviews with all of our retirees, many of which are here this evening, as well as some that have resigned. And I'm also in the midst of doing our senior interviews. Actually, I think I'm done. I can't get any more of them to have lunch with me where I was having groups of seniors and having lunch with them and just getting some insight on their experiences here in Matituck Ketchikan as they're walking out the door. It's been very insightful. It's been, you know, really positive, you know, the interactions with some good suggestions on ways we could tweak and get a little bit better. So I've been enjoying those conversations. Again, it's always good when I have the opportunity to sit down with some students. Monday is our last day of classes at the junior senior high school. Our seniors are going to be going over to Ketchikan East for the senior walk, which is a fun event. They'll then participate in the senior picnic and their day will end with the video yearbook. So a fun day for our seniors. Wednesday will be our graduation rehearsal and award ceremony. And then on Thursday, so that's on the 18th, and then will be closed on Thursday, the 19th. And then on Friday, June 20th, we have our alumni tours here at MHS. We have members of the class of 1975 and the class of 2000. They'll be our guests of honor at graduation. They're having some festivities and they've asked for a tour of the junior senior high school, so we'll provide that for them on Friday. And then Saturday, the 21st, is our 111th annual commencement, and that'll be at 10 o'clock in the gymnasium here. So it is early this year where as school keeps extending where we can and it doesn't conflict with the strawberry festival, we try to run a little earlier. On June 25th, we'll have our sixth grade luncheon and their moving up ceremony will be here in this room at 7 o'clock. And then on June 26th and 27th, Ketchikan East has their early dismissal. And then we're back here as a board on June 2nd for our reorganization meeting. July, I'm sorry, thank you. 2nd for our reorg meeting. And we'll be welcoming Linda Stavarinos and Lauren Acker to the board, plus our student school board members, Brooke Walling and Laurel Richards, and as well as Stephanie Gomez. We'll be welcoming them at that time. So that's my report. At this time though, I would like to, Ms. Anderson didn't run for the board reelection this year. She's been a longstanding member of the Board of Education, has been involved in a lot of the goings-ons and improvements and things that have happened here in the district. She's been a very positive influence. I want to thank you for your service and all that you did. I know you're not going anywhere. You're just getting very busy. But we want to thank you for your service and your time with us and the influence that you've had on our school and our community, so.
Thank you. It's been an honor working with everybody. It's a wonderful district, wonderful community. And thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We'll be seeing you.
Okay, elementary leadership report.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you Board of Education and Mr. Petretti for inviting us tonight to share our elementary student leadership. I'd like to welcome Mrs. Schultz, along with members of our student leadership, Holland Wall, Abby O'Brien, Miley Vigiano, Whitney McKenzie, and Juliet LaFamina.
Hello again. We are the CE Student Leaders. Our co-presidents are Holland Wall and me, Whitney McKenzie. Our vice president is Charlie Trant. Our secretary is Logan Sterling, and our treasurer is Abigail O'Brien. Our class representatives are Julia, Morgan, Colton, Miley, Kalen, Wyatt, Matthew, Chase, Tara, Valencia, Nicholas, Levi, Liam, and Juliet.
Last month, we had our, last month, we had our Neon Glow School Dance. We had a photo, we had a photo booth basketball. We had a DJ booth and shoots. Everyone had an absolute blast. When you walked in, there was neon things you could wear and neon face paint. For food, we had vegetable, fruit, cotton candy, pretzels, cheese puffs, and popcorn. Thank you to the PTA for this amazing experience. Math night was a special evening where teachers and staff created fun and creative activities to make math enjoyable for students of all ages. There were many game stations, activities, and tasty treats. Everyone had a great time and hopes it'll come, happen again someday. Literacy night was a lot of fun, too. We showed how much we love reading by playing exciting games and taking part in fun challenges. Art portfolio night. Six students participated in this year's portfolio project. Five students attended an event in the Southampton Art Center, and one student participated at William Floyd High School on May 31st. Students from our Cultural Connections Club had the opportunity to meet the Matituck Junior High School Cultural Connections Club. During their meeting, they engaged in conversations, collaborated, and even cooked together. The students were excited to meet the older members of the club and build new friendships. Science fair and STEAM night. Congratulations to our first place and honorable mention winners. We had a total of 24 entries submitted into the expedition category eligible for judging. First place entries will be moving ahead to Brookhaven National Laboratory. We had a total of 40 entries in all categories. Great work by all the students who participated. Welcome Committee. The 2024-2025 Student Leaders created the CE Welcoming Committee. The CE Welcoming Committee is about greeting kids who are new to Ketchikan East, making them feel welcome, and introducing them to their classmates and teacher. Student leaders get paired up with all, with, paired up and all get turns showing kids around Ketchikan East. Tuck Junior Night. Our fifth and sixth graders took part in this PTA-sponsored event. The students brought their sportsmanship and unity. Even though there was a winner, students celebrated together, showing each other on and demonstrating the supportive spirit that makes the East so special. The photo attached shows our blue and yellow teams coming together as always. Cares Committee. The cares committee is all about making kids feel included and letting everyone share their ideas to help improve our school. We discuss different issues like problems with the bus or the hallways. And we also talk about what words like care, loving, and kind mean to us. In the Autism Awareness Week, there were different ways, wait, different days for different themes. Autism Spirit Week was a way for our community to learn more about autism and celebrate all of our friends at CE. The CE play Willy Wonka was super inclusive and fun. Everyone who auditioned got a role, whether a lead part or a part of the ensemble. We had actors, set crew, tech crew, and even a snack table to keep us going. Roles included Willy Wonka, Charlie, Matilda, Oompa Loompas, and more. Our dedicated student leadership team and our bilingual students stepped up to support parent-teacher conferences by guiding parents to and from their child's classroom. They ensured the evening ran smoothly for all of our families, and they felt welcomed and informed. Music in our schools. We'll march to Celebrate Music in our Schools Month. Mr. Colleen and Mr. Yamsik hosted our annual mass singer show. Ms. Anaski hosted a Name That Tune game every Friday for the whole school. Beyond that, we were able to see the high school musicians perform and inspire us. We are so grateful to have such great musical experiences in our school. NISMA. NISMA is an after-school activity where kids meet up with our music teacher and learn a song to perform it solo in front of a judge. We also have to learn to sight read to perform it to the judge after we sing. The judge will give critiques to make us sing or play even better. We love NISMA because of our great music teacher. SCMEA and HEMEA. SCMEA is the music festival where the highest-scoring NISMA students get invited to perform an ensemble. It is very prestigious and it challenges and inspires us musicians, musicians in the best ways.
Thank you for having us.
Nice job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Wormuth, you're up.
Good evening and thank you for having me tonight. The June Board Meeting is my favorite board meeting to speak at because it gives me the opportunity to kind of paint a picture of, still just a snapshot of what does take place athletically throughout the year. But this sports season was another great sports season. We had 175 JV and varsity athletes competing with another 92 junior high school students. The boys' tennis team, the boys' and girls' track and field teams, and the girls' lacrosse team all made the postseason. The boys' tennis team did participate in the first round of the county championship tournament as this number seven seed. They took on a real tough competitor in Bayport Blue Point as the number two seed, and we didn't make it out of the first round. But a great showing in that big Division II matchup. The, the girls' lacrosse team finished as the county champions in Class D with a win over Balmone, facing Cold Spring Harbor in the Long Island Championship at Adelphi University. Was a tough matchup. One of the best teams certainly in Long Island and probably the best girls' Class D team in New York State. We'll see. I predict they'll win the state tournament this weekend at Cortland. So great showing for those girls. Five of our track and field members left this morning to go to Middletown. They're going to be competing for a New York State medal and championship. Those members are Daniel Gabboa, he'll be in the triple jump, Ever Meyer in the pentathlon, Rachel Kubitz in the 1500, Haley Lake is competing in the pole vault, and Rihanna Lutz is competing in the long jump. So we've got five members going to represent Suffolk County, but from Matituck in Division, in the, in the Division III Track and Field Championship, Middletown. On Tuesday night, we had an opportunity to get together. We had our senior sports awards. It was a great evening. Forty-three seniors competed this season on the varsity teams. Every varsity team this year, not just this spring, but this year, qualified for the New York State Scholar-Athlete Team, meaning every one of our varsity teams had a grade point average cumulatively of 90 or higher. Another great year for us, both academically and athletically. Our kids do well in so many different areas. Nine of our athletes this year received the Gold Key Award. The Gold Key is an award that's given by Section 11. It's a prestigious award. It honors our student athletes who compete in eight of nine sports seasons between the grades of 10 and 12. And I said this at the senior sports awards, just to kind of put it into perspective, the calendar school year is 180 days. If you participate in three sports seasons throughout the year, you have either practice or a game on a minimum of 160 of those, not counting weekends or postseason play. And many of our athletes overlap because we're in the postseason. So for three straight years, many of our student athletes didn't have a single day off and often started before school started in the, in the fall season. Riley Corrigan and Justin Fox this year, they received the Delicate Award at the Suffolk County Hall of Fame, which recognizes them for their dedication to both sport and their commitment to community service. We're happy and proud of them. Ten of our senior athletes this year are committed to participating at collegiate level. We have three, three members going to the Division One level, six to the Division Two level, and three to the Division, I'm sorry, let me do that one more time. Three to the Division One level, six to the two, and three to the three. Right. Statistically, approximately only 7% of all high school athletes participate at all at the collegiate level. We have 10 of the 43 that competed here for us. Only 2% of those kids of the seven competed the Division One level, and we have three doing that. So I think we're preparing our student athletes both academically and athletically to move on to that next level. Great accomplishment by our students. As a year in total, we had 285 student athletes participate in fall sports, 316 in the winter and 267 in the spring. We have 516 total students, grades seven through 12. We average, if you average those out, we have 290 kids per year participate, per season participate in a sport. We're at the 56 to 57 percentile of all of our kids. Still a great accomplishment for our school and still offering as many things as we ever have and even more with an enrollment that's going down. It's incredible that way. In competition, we competed this year in 641 regular season contests. It's a little lower than normal, but we're anywhere between 650 and 750 on an annual basis. But to put that into perspective, it's like, how many games are going on every single day to get to that number? Tremendous amount of kids participating. Next year, we're going to turn it right around. August 18th starts the fall season next year for football and the 25th for all other sports. So it's just a quick minute of downtime and we're back here doing it again. Competitively, we had 14 of our varsity teams made it into the postseason. That's a lot of teams they're making to pass the regular season into the postseason. Even though we only did capture one league title and two county titles, we put a lot of kids in individual state championships in cross-country and wrestling and track and field. And right now, we have five more kids at the state tournament again. So, you know, it's exciting. It's encouraging. It's just another great year. It's, it almost becomes the expectation sometimes and, you know, you have to, you have to kind of dial it back a little bit because you're always expecting that Matituck is going to be there at the end. So, but that's the year in review and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Wormuth, I got to give you a shout out on the varsity awards, the senior awards the other night, Tuesday night, you were in the Booster Club. Excellent event, really a beautiful night, a nice way to honor those kids. The coaches did a great job as well. It was great. Okay, we are now going to acknowledge some of our retirees that are with us this evening. So normally, we say a couple of words and we give you a pin and we say thank you for your service. Mrs. Bieber was, said, no more with the pins. Gary Buckner doesn't want a pin.
He can have mine.
But what, so Mrs. Arslanian and Mrs. Bieber were brainstorming and what they came up with is they contacted Lee Hornet, who retired in a long time ago.
Fifteen years, 10 years?
Miss Hornet retired numerous years ago. She was an art teacher here at Matituck Ketchikan. And so she made a painting and made prints for us. So for those that are retiring and work primarily at the junior senior high school, there's a picture of the front of the junior high school from across Marituba Lake and a beautiful picture of Ketchikan East and the end, the front entrance there as well for our retirees retiring from Ketchikan East. Well done. That was, that was great. I got very excited when they came in the mail and I opened up the first two ones. I'm like, oh, we had new artwork for the district office. But, and then I thought, what a great idea, learning that they're going to the retirees. So first, I'm going to talk about Pete Charlie Johnson. Pete's not here this evening. He couldn't be here. But his lovely wife, Maddie, is here on his behalf, as is his daughter. How are you? So again, Pete, he's been with us for a long time. So tonight, we honor and recognize Pete as retires after 25 years of service to our district. As you can tell by looking at our buildings and grounds, everyone on our team takes great pride in their work. And Pete has been a valuable member of that team. He started with us in 2001 as a custodial worker one, and in August of 2021, he was promoted to 2001 as a custodial worker one, and in August of 2021, he was promoted to custodial worker two. He spent most of his career with us working at Cudjog East where he not only helped keep the building in pristine condition, he actively engaged with our faculty, staff, and students. And Pete really became part of the fabric of Cudjog East. To watch him interact with the students in the cafeteria was always a pleasure. Always smiling and always having something witty to say every time I saw him. I have truly enjoyed working with Pete. I wish him and Maddie the best in his retirement, and I'm sure they're going to have many adventures planned and cars to renovate, as that is one of his passions. So, Maddie, if I could come up, I'd give you his, uh...
Thank you on behalf of my husband, Pete Johnson and Charles Johnson. I thank you, he thank you. He just got out of the hospital today. He had back surgery. So he says thank you and he wished he could be here, but he can't. So I will accept this and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Deb Guja. She's now with us tonight. And Ms. Allegro, who was going to speak on our behalf, is at another school event. Our high school assistant principal, Ms. Stewart is being honored by the East End Council's Association tonight, so she's there with her. But she gave me something to, to read on Deb's behalf. Tonight, we're here to celebrate and recognize someone who has quietly and consistently made the difference in our school community for over 20 years. As a special education teaching assistant, Deb has spent her career supporting students with a wide range of needs, always bringing patience, care, and thoughtfulness to her work. Throughout her time with us, Deb has been a steady, calming presence. In classrooms that can often be unpredictable, she's helped create a sense of stability and support, not just for students but for the staff as well. She handled each day with a practical approach and a level of calm that helps students feel safe and cared for. Deb has been a strong and reliable partner to many teachers over the years. She was always ready to pitch in, offer perspective, and work together to meet the needs of every child. Her quiet advocacy and steady support made a difference, not in the louder flashy ways but in the small meaningful moments that really matter. One of Deb's greatest strengths has been her ability to form real connections with students, their families, and her colleagues. She understood the importance of building trust and treating every student with empathy and respect. As Deb steps into retirement, we want to thank her for many ways she's contributed to our schools. Her kindness, her calm, and her dedication will be missed. Please join me in wishing Deb all the best in the next chapter. And she's going on to become a professional grandma at this point in time. I also have the honor of recognizing my friend and colleague Gary Spath this evening. Gary, come on up. I don't want to embarrass you. Where's Pops going? I asked that question many times. For the duration of my career at Matituck Cudjog, there is no one that I've worked with as closely on a daily basis as I have with Gary. Gary's been with the district for 28 years after retiring from the T-NET Police Department. Yes, Gary's from New Jersey, and I'd be lying if I said we didn't hold it against him. He has won us over with his wit, talent, and charm over the years. Gary was hired on January of 1997 as a special administrative assistant to the superintendent of schools. I don't know what that title is about. Yeah, we still don't know. I'm not sure what the story behind that is, but when I arrived in September of 97, Gary was the security guard at the high school. For the first two years I was at Matituck, I spent a lot of time in the in-school suspension room as the ISS supervisor. Those were different times, but in that role, I worked closely with Gary, getting insight into the students, their families, and how to handle situations with the students. As I took on the role of dean, Gary really became my right-hand man, and that continued throughout my time in MHS. Even though Gary is from Jersey, he has roots in Matituck and knew many families from his summer times out here. Gary truly cared for the students and their families, often handling situations with students before they would even get to my desk. Granted, often it wasn't by the book, so to speak, but it was done in a way that it should have been done, understanding the students, their families, and the many things that they have going on. Depending on what was going on in the student's life oftentimes dictated how Gary would react to situations. As a security guard, Gary did a lot of life coaching and parent coaching, elevating his impact on our schools and this community. Gary was also that friendly face greeting parents and students every morning for 28 years as he stood outside regardless of the weather, directing traffic and welcoming our students. So many parents have told me over the years the comfort that would give them, pulling up and knowing that Gary was going to be here looking out. In his time, Gary's seen so much happen and transform in, in school safety. Things are so much different today than they were in 1997, making school safety our first priority these days. Columbine in 2000, followed by the passage of the SAVE legislation and numerous other tragedies made schools evaluate policies and procedures, security staffing, and infrastructure. When I reflect back on it all, it can be a bit overwhelming. But through it all, Gary was always at the forefront, lending his expertise as a police officer and security guard and providing input into committees, helping draft all of our policies and procedures. His fingerprints are on all of it. In 2018, Gary became our first security supervisor. Reluctantly, I might add, as he really had no desire to be in charge of other employees. But under his leadership, a team of security guards were hired, and he was once again pivotal in improving the safety and security of our faculty, staff, and students. I could really go on and on about Gary and the work he's done and the times we've had together. There's a lot of stories, probably a bunch I shouldn't share here. But you have been a great colleague and a friend. I wish you all the best in retirement, and I know that you will enjoy every moment with your beautiful family that's here with you tonight. Now go learn how to fish so you can take your grandchildren fishing. I'm now going to ask Ms. Brennan to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Petretti. I'd like to introduce Margot Kobis to join me at the podium. Tonight, it is my honor to recognize and celebrate the extraordinary career of Margot Kobis, whose dedication and compassion have touched countless students and families. Mrs. Kobis began her journey in a small country school in Atlanta, Georgia, teaching third grade with warmth and enthusiasm. She then moved to Virginia Beach, teaching second and third grade for seven years. During that time, while her husband Ken was deployed for the Gulf War, Margot balanced teaching, raising a toddler, and supporting her family with remarkable strength. Later, Margot and Ken returned to New York with their growing family, where she taught third, fourth, and fifth grades at New Suffolk School and served as lead teacher. In 1999, Margot joined our Cudjog East community, working towards her Masters in Special Education and Literacy while teaching third, fourth, and sixth grades, and mostly kindergarten. No matter what grade, Margot's classroom has always been a place of kindness, encouragement, and joy. She believes the most important thing is for children to know they are loved and that teaching is truly a calling. Her greatest hope is that her students leave knowing they were cherished. As Margot retires, she looks forward to time with her family, her four sons, her one daughter, and five grandchildren, especially looking forward to her daughter Chloe's senior year, and most of all, enjoying this new chapter with her husband Ken. Mrs. Kobis, your legacy is one of love, resilience, and unwavering dedication. On behalf of your colleagues, students, and this entire community, we thank you for everything. Congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. Next, I'd like to ask Rob Osman to join me at the podium.
It is my privilege tonight to recognize and celebrate the retirement of Rob Osman, an extraordinary educator who has devoted 29 years to inspiring students through the universal language of music. Rob began his teaching career as a second career after earning a biology degree and spending 15 years in sales and business management. Driven by his passion, he returned to school at night while working full-time and raising a young family. After teaching in two other districts, Mr. Osman found his true home in the Matituck Cudjog School District. From his first year teaching music across multiple buildings, that would be Laurel, Cudjog West, Matituck Junior High, and Cudjog East, to his later years exclusively at Cudjog East, Mr. Osman brought expertise, creativity, and a deep commitment to nurturing every student's confidence. Whether leading choirs, organizing memorable concerts, or encouraging a shy child to find their voice, he made our music program a source of pride. Beyond the classroom, Mr. Osman enriched our community through events like tree lightings, caroling, and nursing home visits. He helped bring the Smithsonian Library to life by incorporating music into their curriculum. He wrote a school song for Cudjog East, building dedication, and even helped students to learn to square dance. As Rob begins his well-earned retirement, he looks forward to traveling with his wife Camilla and friends on a two-week tour through Austria, Austria and Italy, performing with Camilla's women's choir and a small band. He also plans to pursue some new musical projects and spend cherished time with his children and his granddaughter. As a musical family, there will no doubt be much singing and joy. As he steps into this new chapter, we know his legacy will continue to resonate in every note played and every student inspired. On behalf of our faculty, staff, and generations of students, thank you, Mr. Osman, for your extraordinary service. We wish you joy and harmony in the years ahead. Congratulations on your well-deserved retirement.
Tonight, I'm going to also reckon, I will also be recognizing Cindy Pamillo. She's not able to be here tonight. She's already began her next career of babysitting her grandchildren. Tonight, it is my honor to recognize and celebrate the remarkable career of Cindy Pamillo, who is retiring after nearly 30 years of dedicated service to the Matituck Cudjog School District. Throughout her time at Cudjog East, Cindy has worn many hats: bus monitor, lunch monitor, health aide in the nurse's office, and often the friendly face at our front desk. Regardless of the role, Cindy has been the heart of our school, a constant caring presence. From comforting a child with an ice pack to meticulously keeping attendance and health records, Cindy has quietly ensured that our school runs smoothly and that every student feels safe and cared for. She is always ready to assist colleagues, not only in the health and main offices but throughout the entire Cudjog East community. This year, at dismissal, you'll find her standing outside with our youngest students, patiently waiting with them for parent pickup, offering a warm smile and a friendly chat to end their day. Cindy's kindness and dedication have touched generations of families in our community. She has consistently been there to help, listen, and support, embodying the very best of what it means to serve in education. As she approaches retirement, Cindy carries with her countless memories, meaningful relationships, and a special place in our school community, a person who has left a lasting impact on so many. Looking ahead, Cindy looks forward to enjoying her retirement with her family, especially spending more treasured time with her grandchildren. On behalf of the entire school community, thank you, Cindy, for your unwavering commitment and the countless ways you have made a difference. You will be deeply missed, but your legacy will live on in the halls of Cudjog East and in the hearts of everyone you've helped along the way. Congratulations, Cindy.
I now ask Mr. Burke to come forward.
I didn't screen what he's going to do. I just want to let you know that now.
Gary, no.
He's retired.
I, I have the luxury, I would say, one year of getting to know this gentleman and also the other honorary Mr. Farrell. But in my one year of building a relationship and understanding who they are as people, I have the privilege of providing an opportunity to speak on their behalf and recognize them. You know, I was a sociology teacher and I did not want this to be traditional. I've done a number of these over 10 years in administration and I found them after a while to be very enjoyable, but yet with a lot of facts and great things they did, which will hopefully be accomplished. Charlie, don't tie me. I felt it would be fitting and I was going to ask Mr. Doug if I could wear your hat. I'm not sure it'll fit. Let me just take a peek. The reason why is, as a, as a gentleman who is a historian and an explorer and Indiana Jones of people, I do believe that this is fitting. And if this is a bit much, tell me next year and I won't do it.
It's a bit much, but go on.
With that said, we've decided that we would present the lost scrolls of Mr. Buckner. As a sociology teacher, you can clearly see how stunning this is. Doug, thank you for the hat, but I'm going to take it off now. I appreciate it. You know, most people wouldn't let somebody else wear their hat, so I really do appreciate that.
I don't know if you should have worn Doug's hat.
What's that?
I don't know if you should have worn Doug's.
That's okay. I don't mind. But before I put this up... Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to hear and understand the legend of Mr. Gary Buckner. It's more of a historian tribute, if you will. And everything I do say here is on the scroll. Good evening, fellow explorers. Tonight, we gather not in the shadows, halls of ancient ruins, nor in the midst of dusty tombs of forgotten civilizations, but in the vibrant, buzzing ecosystem of Matituck High School. Here, hidden in the plain sight, is a treasure trove of knowledge and wonder. And, he's right there. Most of the magic occurs in a place of mystery, wonder, and concern, Mr. Buckner's classroom. A place like stepping into a living museum, an eclectic collection of artifacts and curiosities, some familiar, some mysterious, but all with a spirit of discovery. For those of you who have ventured into his sanctuary of learning, you'll know that it's more than just a classroom. It's an experience, a carefully curated space where history, culture, and the relentless pursuit of wisdom collides. Some relics remain mysterious, sparkling, endless debates and theories. What is it? How did this object survive? Or more simply, why on earth is there still a rotting apple on his desk after months? Now I tell you this because these are the things that you'll see, but if you haven't been in his room, this might not make sense. Is it an apple? Is it a forgotten snack? Or is it a relic? Or is it a cryptic symbol of the decipherable... Or is it a cryptic symbol of the decipherable, a cryptic symbol only decipherable by those who initiate the legend of Gary Buckner? Though this is my first expedition with him, as it is my first year, I have been fortunate to witness a profound, calm, and joyful presence that Mr. Buckner brings into every corner of the school. He's like a seasoned archaeologist who's mapped out every crevice of our lost city. Mr. Buckner navigates the complexities of teaching with a balance that few can: calmness, confidence, and always with conversation. Now, as one enters the catacombs or the tomb of Mr. Buckner, there's a crypt, there's a Cyrillic alphabet, a message that's on the entry of his door. What does it say? We don't know. Many, many years, it's taken people to figure out what this says, but if you can figure this out, you understand who this man is. If you can figure this out, when you enter his classroom, which I did, and I saw this, I realized, wow, this is not just a classroom. And as students, when you leave his classroom and you master this, you are prepared for life. Now, I did this with my glasses off, so it's clear that I have no idea what that says, and I'm sure you can't, but we're gonna try to sound it out. I asked Mr. Delarque to help me, but I'm sure myself. It says, I believe, "Hey you, don't be a ideologue." Let me try it again. "Hey you, don't be a ideologue." Don't, don't know. "Hey you, don't..." Let's put my glasses on, because it was spelled out easier on his door. This is what it says. "Hey you, don't be an ideologue." An ideologue, if you don't know... Which translates to, "Hey you, don't be an ideologue." We've discovered, over the years, that Mr. Buckner has defined this, not only in the way he teaches, but the way he behaves and conducts himself, the way he teaches his lessons and shares with his students, the expectations that he has for everyone that enters his room, and the expectation that he also portrays and provides through his example. An ideologue, if you don't know, is someone who beliefs and actions are driven by a set of principles or ideas that often point, that are often to the point of rigidity, a term that sometimes echoes in some of the hallways. But, his joy is infectious, he is a beacon of brightness, he lives... I lost my spot, I apologize. His joy is infectious, a beacon that has brightened the lives of hundreds of students and colleagues alike. For three decades, Mr. Buckner has been a master of his craft. His lessons are like meticulously excavated artifacts, carefully planned, aligned with the standards of academics, and designed to illuminate the minds of his students rather than merely fill them with facts. He weaves connections across disciplines, making history and knowledge resonate with relevance and meaning. What sets Mr. Buckner apart from many is his blending of old-world methods with modern innovations. He's never one to follow any trends, he's used modern teaching tools, interactive whiteboards, Google classrooms. Meanwhile, he wields and guides notes, hands-on activities, and lively discussions with precision of an explorer, unearthing secrets of the past layer by layer. The impact of Mr. Buckner's work has stretched beyond the classroom walls, shaping generations of minds and hearts. Many have passed through his domain, each touched by his guidance and inspired by his example, and supported by his steady hand. This deserves to be up. So, this, as you see, is the decree of everything that I'm saying. It's the legend of Mr. Buckner. This has actually been calligraphy been done by a student, where Mr. Buckner's on the front of his boat, the image, and it starts with "tonight," and that's the T. I will just say, your journey has not been one-sided, Mr. Buckner. You have said and shared with me often that your students have been the greatest teachers, challenging and inspiring you, reminding you of daily and noble calling that is education. So, as we close with the scroll and Mr. Buckner's remarkable 30 years, we'd like to, and I would like to, offer you my deepest gratitude. Your classroom's unique collection, your wisdom, your unwavering dedication will sorely be missed. And of course, we must acknowledge the mystery that may never be solved, the apple on your desk. Witness, this may be a witness of your legacy, but it may also be a legend in its own right. Mr. Buckner, you move from chalk-dusted blackboards to the glowing lights of digital realm. The light of the spirit will sorely be missed but not forgotten. The legacy of Mr. Buckner stretches and will stretch far beyond the walls through generations of minds and hearts to come. Congratulations, Mr. Buckner, on your amazing career, and your story will be told for years to come. No, but I don't know what happened to the pin.
You're gonna pack up that room before you go, right, Gary?
I am pleased to also provide another recognition and appreciation if Mr. Farrell could please come forward. Thank you, sir. So, as a historian, I provided the opportunity for scrolls for Mr. Buckner. Now, as an English teacher, I have the opportunity, I don't need the hat this time, Mr. Doug, thank you, but I have the opportunity to present and thought what would be most fitting for an English teacher but to read a book. So, I've created a book. Turning the Pages: The Farewell of Mr. Farrell.
Who did the illustrations?
The illustrations, I have students to thank, not me. I have them written down. Okay. Title: Turning the Page: The Farewell of Mr. Farrell. Chapter One. A farewell worthy of a legend. I am pleased to stand here tonight to celebrate Tom Farrell as he wraps up an amazing career teaching English here at Matituck High School. This moment is more than just a retirement send-off, it's a celebration of a legacy of teaching English to all of our students, including AP English for our seniors.
Hello, everybody. This is my subconscious thoughts interrupting this traditional recognition. I hope that sounded nice, and I hope everyone was paying attention to me and what I was saying about Mr. Farrell. I wonder how Tom would have liked me to have read the first chapter, Farewell to a Legend. You know, as I was reading, all I could hear was Tom's voice in my head. "Mr. Burke, Mr. Burke, do you have a second?" He would hang around after our faculty meetings until everyone left and ask me if I meant to use a specific word, seeking appropriate English word usage clarification and possible correction. As a matter of fact, just the other day, he asked me if I meant to say unraveled or disheveled. I must say, he makes me a bit nervous presenting on his honorable recognition. What if I stumble on a word or use a goofy grammar? I bet Tom would want it to sound more like this.
That was my thoughts. "I bet Tom would want it to sound more like this. Chapter One: A Farewell Worthy of a Legend. Mr. Tom Farrell Approved Version." It was a early, warm June evening, the kind that carried the scent of the sun-warmed asphalt and the impeding summer freedom. The multipurpose room of Matituck High School auditorium was buzzing with laughter reminiscent of stories and the occasional nostalgic sigh. Posters from the past English classes were still clung to the walls where Mr. Farrell taught, quotes from Shakespeare, Hamlet, Tom Morrison casting a watchful eye over the crowd. Tonight, however, all eyes were on one man, the myth, the legend, Mr. Tom Farrell. A legend in sensible shoes, sat quietly near the front of the room, modest as ever, pretending not to enjoy the attention, but this evening was all his. After three decades of teaching English at Matituck, he's now retiring. Everyone had gathered to mark the moments when the chapter, long and full of notes and margins, would finally come to a close. He waits with intensity of a kid before Christmas, waiting for that legendary, long-promised retirement pin, which you're not getting, but you will be getting a picture. A symbol so rare, it's basically the workplace version of a unicorn. Yeah, that's what Tom would expect, that's the way he would like that chapter to be read. Well, back to the traditional recognition. Chapter Two. Mr. Farrell, your dedication and commitment have left a lasting mark on so many students. For many years, you haven't just taught grammar rules or how to write an exceptional essay, you've helped students grow in so many ways. Your classroom wasn't just a place of academic lesson, it was a place for life lessons. Skip through a few chapters, we are gonna go to Chapter Seven: The Director. Tom was a director for many years besides an English teacher. The title of this chapter, The Church of What We Think Was Marzipan. Mr. Farrell didn't direct plays, he ran a mildly unhinged snack-based cult that occasionally produced theater. At the most recent play rehearsal, Mr. Farrell broke what appeared to be a piece as he claimed it was white marzipan. Though it had a texture of sidewalk chalk and flavor of regret, he handed it out like communion, muttering to his students, "Take this, children, and suffer with me." Some of them said it was Bulgarian, others believed it came from the Cold War bunker. No one knew for sure, but everyone took a piece. You didn't say no to Mr. Farrell, especially when you wanted to have pizza later. Food was his fuel and his bargaining chip, building sets, bagels, paint, and flats. Pizza, and you learn your lines. I got some other snacks from Istanbul in my desk drawer, don't ask. Beneath the snacks, the spacious imports, the man could direct. He had a talent for adjusting to every kid, loud ones, shy ones, dramatic ones, allergic to, effort ones. Mr. Farrell had a gift, where he was able to meet them where they were, and then drag them to the Broadway, or at least convincingly close to the high school budget play. He built magic from cardboard, convinced teens to care about tragedy, and made everyone feel like they mattered, even if they were just holding a tree. Last chapter. Job well done. Tom, thank you. Thank you for your passion, your wisdom, and your kindness, and for a job well done. Wait a minute. That's not how Tom would want this last chapter of the story to go. I wish his voice would just leave my head and leave me alone. Okay, okay, Tom, here it goes. Chapter Ten: A Job Well Done. Tom Farrell Approved Version. In the end, the room stood and clapped, not because it was expected, but because it was honest. A job well done is rare thing, but Tom Farrell had done it, again and again, year after year, both teaching and directing. The applause was just for the man, wasn't just for the man, but for the way he made people feel, challenged, seen, better, for who they were before. Somewhere amid the laughters and the tears, someone quoted Shakespeare. Not the usual line, not the soliloquies or the sonnets, from one of Mr. Farrell's favorites, Hamlet. Act Three, Scene Three, Line Eighty-Seven. And I quote, "No." A single, syllable, sharp, and sure, one of Mr. Farrell's more common responses. When someone tried to cut corners, or settle for less, or ask if close enough was good enough, no, not here, not in this room, not in this chapter. I do believe the next book that is written, I suggest the title to be this. The Great and Honorable Tom Farrell: The Professional Retiree. You didn't just teach, Tom, you inspired. You didn't just show up, you showed the way. Enjoy the slower mornings, the longer lunches, and the well-earned peace. You've earned more than that, besides the picture or the pin and the applause. Tom, happy retirement, sir.
Okay, before Alana comes up to do some professional development, I would just like, I would just like to thank Brooke Walling and Stephanie Gomez for being here tonight, and Laurel Richards would also be here, is she here? No? Okay, and these are our student reps that are going to start on the board in July, and we are so excited about that. We can't wait for you to be sitting on the other side of the table. So, welcome, and thank you for coming tonight. Payman, a good night.
We usually don't have a dinner and a show.
Yeah, yeah. And next time, we're gonna charge, because, you know. Okay, Alana.
I don't know, that's some act to follow him.
Yeah, this is not really going to be at all like what he just did.
Professional development.
Tomorrow, and tomorrow, and tomorrow.
So, I am pleased to provide an update on our professional development initiatives and curriculum work taking place this summer and moving ahead for the upcoming school year. So, this summer, we are offering four professional development courses and service courses for K through 12 teachers, all facilitated by our own faculty members. These offerings were thoughtfully designed based on feedback from our recent professional development survey, and we're very pleased to see our faculty stepping forward to share their expertise with their colleagues. And when you have a peer-led learning, it really does build community, and it does reinforce the collaborative spirit that we all believe in and share in. The four courses are Enhancing Retention and Developing Mathematical Language in the Mathematics Classroom. This came from an initiative of our math teachers in middle school and in elementary school, going to a course at Bosse's, a workshop at Bosse's, and they're bringing this back to share with their colleagues. The other one is kind of a throwback, but the survey shows that the teachers won some of it back again, Making Thinking Visible, Using Thinking Maps to Support Student Learning. And then Beyond the Story, Using Read Alouds to Build Knowledge and Vocabulary. And Every Teacher is a Language Teacher: Fifty Strategies for Supporting Multilingual Learners. These four classes are taught by four different teachers. So, last year, we got, it used to be the coach would teach, and then we started tapping other teachers, and you notice that they're doing things, you know, really well, and showing them, and trying to, encouraging teachers to come share what they know. So last year, we got, it used to be the coach would teach, and then we started tapping other teachers, and you notice that they're doing things, you know, really well and showing them and trying to, encouraging teachers to come share what they know. So we have a couple new teachers on board now, so we have four different teachers running these courses. So in addition to these district-sponsored offerings, many of our teachers are also actively pursuing their own in-service or graduate-level coursework to continue their professional growth. We also have staff attending external workshops and trainings this summer with a particular focus on STEM and literacy. The big, the big news is that we have several curriculum writing projects scheduled throughout the summer. Includes Science Six Through Eight, Chemistry, Earth Science, Physics, Grade Twelve English, Special Class Programming, E and L English, Precalc, Algebra II, and Spanish. The curriculum writing process is not only essential for us to ensure alignment, consistency, and quality in instruction, but it also serves as a valuable professional development opportunity for participating teachers. On the administrative side, our leadership team will begin training on a new data tool that will help us monitor and analyze student performance more holistically. This tool will support meaningful goal setting in the district level, building, and department. And it will also help us track progress over time. Differentiation remains a top instructional priority across all grade levels, with the diversity of learners in our classrooms, equipping teachers with strategies to meet a wide range of student needs to continue to be a central focus of all of our PD. Looking ahead to the upcoming, upcoming school year, and a lot more of this information is to come over the summer, we'll begin deeper work around the state's new graduation measures. We're still awaiting further guidance from the state, but we are currently exploring new innovative ways to expand pathways to graduation. Our work in, uh, career and technical education is already underway, as you know, with our carpentry program. And now we have started a new partnership with Cornell Cooperative for our science programs, and so, which is opening up possibilities in agricultural pathways, graduation pathways, and STEM as well. So thank you for your ongoing support, for all this work to happen, and supporting our teachers, our programs, and we're gonna continue to do our best to create a robust forward-thinking environment for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Alana.
Thank you, Alana. Does anyone have any questions for Alana? Thank you.
Okay. We're up to the Board of Education Committee reports. Policy, Legislature, and Community Relations. Lorraine?
This time, the committee reviewed the following revised and existing policies that will have a reading and adoption at the reorganization meeting in July. Policy Four Five Two Six: Computer, Network, and Internet Acceptable Use, revised. It was updated with cellphone ban restriction language. Policy Five Six Oh Five: Voter Registration for Students, revised. Policy Six Two Four Zero: Investments, revised. Policy Six Seven Zero Zero: Purchasing, revised. And Policy Nine Three Two Zero: Drug Alcohol-Free Workplace, revised.
Thank you.
Right, I just have a question. The computer acceptance policy, do you know, does that have any language in it for artificial intelligence and using that to answer questions?
I'm gonna bounce that one back to Sean.
Jeff? So the computer acceptable use policy, does that have any language on artificial intelligence and using it to complete work?
Um, I'm not, Kelly?
Yes. Okay, great, yeah, 'cause some of the extensions that you can add to Chrome basically do it all for the students?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Okay. All right, great.
Anybody else? Okay, Curriculum, Technology, and Health. Karen Mottarella?
Yes, so our committee met and we discussed the EduClimber, which is where the directors explored and demoed the platform. It's by Renaissance Star. In consideration of purchasing this software, and as Alana spoke about that, EduClimber is an interactive system that integrates the whole child data into a single platform with built-in tools for intervention tracking, collaborative workflows, effectiveness reporting, MTSS, and professional development. It brings together the academic, social, emotional behavior, intervention, and attendance data all in one place and synchronizes and integrates with Infinite Campus. Additional demos are planned, and if purchased, can be introduced to teachers in a future staff conference day activity. They then spoke about Pocket Talk, directors investigated this handheld device that enables instant image and two-way voice translation for use in the district to enhance connections between school and families and to help multilingual learners. A few devices will be purchased for testing. We spoke about Gmail. The staff and student Microsoft Outlook accounts will be migrating to Gmail in the Google Workspace over the summer. The move to Gmail affords increased storage space, enhanced organization and search capabilities, and better integration with other Google services that students and staff currently use.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, Buildings and Grounds.
Dr. Heine, Patricia, a number of items. All our classrooms, district-wide, have been fitted with air conditioning, so as the weather heats up, we can keep cool. We have planted six red maple trees at Ketchogue East for shade and color. At Ketchogue West, the handicap ramp is being replaced. The plaster, most of us have heard about the plaster that fell down in a stairwell two or three weeks ago. That has been repaired, and another section was found, and that has been also repaired. We're also in the process of replacing classroom lighting with LED units. The high school is finished, and Ketchogue East will be done by September. It will be paid for, bought at least, by PSEG rebate program, and our, our district employees will be doing the work. That's another considerable savings. The cupola and facial work, which has been, and tap, we're safe for the 30 years that I've been here, it will be worked on and should be completed by September. We have two project managers that will supervise the work, and that also will be in-house and saving us. One other thing, all future school projects will now have, over a million dollars, will have to go to bids with union employees, and that will end up costing us more money, but that's state law now.
It's, it's working its way through. It got approved today by the Senate, and then it's in the Rules Committee, but it, it looks like it's most likely going through.
Most likely it will be done, yes. That's it, Patricia?
That's it, thank you.
I do have one question. I was recently down at Ketchogue East and noticed when you first walked in, some of the tiles have been, I guess, stained with the water, and I know we did the whole roof. Will those be replaced over the summer?
We'll look into that, they should be. And we should not have any more leaks.
No, that's what I thought, but I looked up, and then I walked around the corner and saw another leak, so I just wanted to make sure of that.
Well, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Lorraine, Cares Committee?
Uh, the update from Ketchogue East was given by Mrs. Brennan. At the committee's last meeting, a shared vision was created and student concerns were reviewed. The Let Grow Program will be expanded for the new school year. At the student committee meeting, core values were discussed, and students will be surveyed for their wants and ideas. The results will provide a good plan and overview for the next school year. Approximately 20 students participate in the Student Cares Committee. The Adult Committee currently has two community members and four teacher members. At the high school, Mrs. Finnegan provided an update. The committee's mission statement is finalized. The committee comprises of the Mental Health Committee, two community members, three to four parents, and some students. Special thanks to eighth-grade student Sam, Sam McShane, who attended all the meetings this school year. The committee plans to do a school climate survey for connectedness, participation, set goals for the next school year, recap this year's events, and conduct a needs assessment. And as mentioned earlier by Mr. Petretti, the Mobile Museum of Tolerance visited both schools the first week in June and delivered workshops that covered topics including antisemitism and heat, lessons of the Holocaust, the Civil Rights Movement, and decoding online hate.
Good, thank you. Negotiations and Personnel, that's me. We have several postings and resignations, athletic positions, clubs, co-curriculars for the new school year, music, special education, library and media specialists, custodial and maintenance. There's custodial shifts for the summer. We'll have four custodians that will remain on the night shift to Ketchogue East and, and Matituck High School during the summer months, while the rest of the custodial staff will work the day shift, which is the usual summer schedule. Having custodians in the building at night will increase security and support de-p cleaning and floor stripping and waxing that normally would only be done during the day. And Emily Wagner is in, is here, and she's our, on the agenda for board approval, she's our library media specialist, so I don't want to welcome you until we approve it, but welcome.
Welcome aboard, Emily.
Donations. I need a motion to accept an anonymous donation of $900 to support students attending the 2025 senior class trip to Hershey Park.
I make a motion?
You need a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Personnel, Items A through K. I need a motion to accept A through K.
So moves.
I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. I need a motion for resolution, Items A through J.
Make a motion?
I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
Okay, Audience Communications. Anybody have anything to talk about that's not on the, that on the agenda, not on the agenda? Tanya, you have anything to say?
A little excited that nobody said, the Cares Committee, Juliana, saw that plus, brought it to the meeting, Mr. Burke, okay, friend, she was really proud of herself for doing it, and nobody said, hey, congratulations to Juliana. I come to the meeting, we're here, we're participating, we don't have anyone possible. Where is it?
Well, I, I want you to know that I made sure in the press release to the local paper weeks ago that I mentioned your daughter's name and asked that they absolutely recognize that. I, I just don't know why it hasn't shown up or it hasn't been, you know, published as of yet, but we're very appreciative. We mentioned the Cares Committee and their influence, but I absolutely made a point to say that to the newspaper as well.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Thank you, everybody.